Awesome. Thank you, Kristin. Thanks for being here, guys. I hope everybody has a copy of the agenda to look at. Is everybody good there? Do you want me to resend it to you quickly, or y'all set?
One sec.
All right, so. Let's quickly just go through members of our committee that are here this afternoon and members of our committee that are not here this afternoon. And I'm just going to ask you, please, to go just quickly through and announce who you are. So we'll start with Tanisha, if that's okay.
Okay. Tanisha Grant, I am Vice Chair of the Spirit Committee. And just being a part of the Data Subcommittee.
Chris Kelly, member of the Spirit Committee.
Thanks, Chris.
Mary Margaret Jorgenti, member of the Spirit Committee.
Thanks, Mary Margaret. And as of right now, we're missing Meg Evans, who's also a member of the Data Subcommittee and Spirit Council. She might be jumping on late, I'm not sure, but I'm also fairly certain that her day today was probably did not go the way she planned. I'm just guessing. A before break, that seems to be the way. Next in our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I did ask Kristin, and Kristin is going to check into it, if this is something that is necessary going forward. And that being said, I don't have a flag, so I don't know if somebody does where they are, or if somebody would be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I've got one here.
Alrighty.
Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And so as of 4:09 here on Wednesday, November 25th, I'd like to call to order the Spirit Council Data Subcommittee meeting. I don't know if that needs a vote, but I'm assuming since you're here, you're in favor, so we're going to move forward to the next agenda item. We don't have public comments this afternoon for our meeting, Kristin made me aware of that. Next on our agenda is just a brief update from me, and I actually would invite any of you in the group who have an update as well to use this time for that. I will also go ahead and put out on the table that I'm terrible at following rules, so in terms of like Roberts Rules of Order and the jet, like somebody, y'all are going to have to call me when I like don't do the right thing, so. And do not, please don't be bashful about doing that. Following rules is not my skill set, but I also want to get this right, so I will trust that you will support me in those efforts. So it's been a while since this Subcommittee has met. I know that the Steering Committee met in November, and I was unable to be at that meeting because of a last-minute family emergency. But I've gotten some updates from Tanisha, from Cheryl, thank you so much, from Cheryl, and from Nicole, from Chris, so I've stayed connected. Our last meeting, I believe, was in September in preparation for the Board of Selectmen meeting that happened. And of course, you know from that meeting that the Board of Selectmen adopted the proclamation. The Data Subcommittee was able to set forth some real, some specific goals, which are outline, which we outlined in the presentation to the Board of Selectmen, are also attached to the agenda you have this evening, this afternoon, so you should be able to see that. And so by way of update, essentially, we just need to spend our time this afternoon charting our very next steps forward with some real concrete plans and steps for each of us to take following this meeting, as well as setting up future meeting times. What else do we have? I'm really looking to Tanisha and Chris by way of update that I have missed thus far.
Rebecca, the only, I guess the only thing that was highlighted for me as I was working on the the feedback that we got on the strategic planning was that the Board of Selectmen will need some estimate from us fairly quickly in terms of what the cost of utilizing an outside vendor will be. So I think that's the only thing I would share that, I think it's within your intent today and everything, but.
Correct. Perfect. Okay, that's helpful, yes. Thank you, Chris. Tanisha, anything from your perspective that I'm missing?
Nope, nothing at all, Chris. I'm pretty much summed up what we would need to have ready by the time December, December's meeting happens.
Okay. All right, so that, yes, that we have covered in our new business section of our agenda, so the action items that we have, I, my, I'm coming into the next portion of our agenda, assuming that we don't need to spend much time on our action items, mostly because we spent a good amount of time establishing our goals for the Board of Selectmen meeting, so what I'd like to do this afternoon is just take a look at those quickly and which is something we should be doing regularly, of course, and just make a decision as a group, at least for now, are these the goals we want to continue to be working with? And what are we doing towards working, in working towards those goals, so. Let me see here, I think I just had my courier bring me, yes, the printout, so. Attached to your agenda were these notes as well, so you might be able to just scroll down and see that on page two. That the purpose of the Data Subcommittee is to gather data, to assess progress towards DEI goals developed by the Spirit Council, more specifically to engage an expert, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes, to assist with gathering and analyzing data, to recommend follow-up plans or actions with community involvement, to create benchmarks using existing and not yet collected data, and to monitor progress. Your feedback on those goals might just be, that sounds great, I don't, you know, I don't think we need to tweak anything, but I also want to make sure that we're laying those on the table, certainly for this meeting, and we'll, again, we'll probably do it, we need to do it periodically throughout our time together, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So thoughts or feedback there from y'all about those?
Let's move forward until we've accomplished something, and then we can revise them as necessary. Good place to start.
Yeah, I thought they were well-stated, so I don't have any recommended changes.
None here as well.
Okay. Awesome. All right, so we'll come back to those in just a minute. The next thing that we need to, from the, from the sublime to the ridiculous, we need to now establish our calendar for meeting dates, so what we're, our plan for that, that Kristin and I actually just talked through, is we'll set another special meeting for December. And then we will, we need to set our calendar basically for 2021, a regular meeting date. So, does everybody have their calendars out? And remind me, when is the Spirit Council meeting? The Steering Committee meeting?
It is the seventh, so it's the first Monday of the month.
First Monday, okay. I, I went into my calendar and blocked off every Monday for Spirit Council?
Ambitious, Rebecca.
I know, I'm ready to, I'm ready to solve all the problems.
You are ready to go.
Perfect.
So the first Monday at 6:00 PM is Spirit Council as it is, obviously, we don't want to conflict. We don't want to conflict with that meeting, nor would I imagine you'd want to put necessarily another evening meeting on your calendars for that same week, so I think, you know, we do well by looking at the second and third weeks of the month for our regular meeting.
So, and it'll probably be easier for us with the new way of how we, how we would be able to meet, because the Events Subcommittee typically meets on the second Monday, I believe. I believe they meet the second Monday.
Oh, okay, right, because we're not going to be able to all be, we can't meet at the same time because we can't be on. Or can we? Is that what you're saying, Tanisha, that we possibly could be on at the same time?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, that would be something we would have to follow up with Kristin on, because I'm not sure how many, yeah, no, we wouldn't be able to do it at the same time, because if we're going to livestream it to Facebook, we can't both be on at the same time.
Right. All right, so, and that, I guess, also begs the question of like, when is the Outreach Committee's regular meeting? Do we know about that?
That one, I'm not sure of.
Okay. Tuesdays are typically pretty tricky for me. What would say the one, the third Wednesday of each month look like for your schedules?
Did you say the third, Rebecca?
The third Wednesdays, yeah.
Okay.
Can, can we keep it on a Monday and do it like the Monday before the Steering Committee meeting?
Yeah, I'm, that's, I'm totally open, so I shouldn't say totally open, but yeah, Mondays work for me, so that would be typically, typically, although, so that would typically be the fourth Monday, but I think there would be some months, is that possible, where there would be like a fifth Monday?
Yeah.
But we could still keep it on the fourth Monday, it would still fall, yeah.
Yeah.
So what about that for folks?
So which one, the fourth Monday?
Yeah.
That generally works for me.
Yep.
All right, and then what timing works best for your schedules, that six o'clock time that Spirit Council meets, later, earlier?
Anything after four works for me.
So I can do five and later, generally?
And I can, I'm flexible, it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
And that might work better for Meg also, because she's coming from, from work, so that might work better for her, possibly.
Which, Tanisha, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
After five would probably work better for her.
Okay. And I think in, in a virtual world, closer to five works for me, in a physical world, closer, later works for me in order to get, so I think in that vein, do we want to settle on six and call it a date?
Sure.
All right, so the fourth Monday at 6:00 PM will be, I'll, I'll send out in our minutes the specific dates that those are for 2021. That does put us at December 28th for our meeting in December, which actually works for me, so. Okay, great, thank you so much, Kristin. It will still be a special meeting, because it's not 30 days out from Monday, the 30th, which is when I will file for our meeting calendar, but does that, does the 28th work for you all?
It's fine.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That is the hardest, easiest thing I've ever done. What a relief, woo! All right. Any other thoughts or questions about upcoming meeting dates? Kristin, in an email either to all of us or to me, strongly encouraged voting to adopt these sorts of things, so I'm going to present a motion that our meeting calendar include a special meeting date for December 28th at 6:00 PM, and further meetings take place on the fourth Mondays of each month in the 2021 calendar year at 6:00 PM. Can I get someone to second that, please?
Second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Fantastic, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move into the new business portion of our agenda unless I am missing something or anybody has anything else to add. All right. Part of our, part of the FOIA requirements include taking and keeping minutes for these types of meetings. Tonight, I'm certainly going to be taking minutes and submitting minutes for the meeting. But one of the things I thought might be helpful is is appointing a recording secretary for this Subcommittee, just so we know that it's somebody's job to take minutes and submit them. Is anyone in this crew willing to do that?
I'm willing to, Rebecca.
Chris, that would be great, and this is the kind of thing that we can readdress every six months or so and trade off. I don't necessarily think it's wise to trade off like every meeting, but I do think, I don't want you to feel like you're going to carry this burden into eternity, so if you'd be willing to do it for the next stretch, that would be fantastic. Kristin is going to send to me a sample of minutes that I will use to base minutes for this afternoon's meeting on, and put those together, and then certainly get those to you, so then you can do the similar process. So if you'll start that, in that role for our December meeting, that would be fantastic, Chris. Thank you. All right, so this is probably where we're going to spend a good chunk of our time this afternoon, is the next steps for townwide surveying procedures, processes, et cetera. There, one of our goals, obviously, that we just listed off was engaging somebody to help us move through this process. We also spent a considerable amount of time in our previous meetings talking about surveys, surveying methods, samples of surveys, trying to do a town survey, all those sorts of things. So I think we have a handful of questions to answer tonight, this afternoon, even though it's nearly pitch dark outside. And one is, you know, do we see the survey as being, still being a piece to this puzzle that we want to move forward with? If we do, do we see that survey being something that we would, we would maybe wait on and ask whatever outside consultant we bring in to help us with that, as well as the other things we will need help with? And then I have some very tangible next steps we need to take in terms of talking about an external consultant, somebody outside. So we can start kind of anywhere in that, in that process, but thoughts and feedback about all of that?
Well, I certainly think that should be a component of what the outside consultant would do, I mean, I think that's essential, so that we hit the goals that we're attempting to achieve, and that we have the opportunity to have a perspective beyond our own perspective as to what components are essential. Surveying, as we learned from the last election, is a rather important kind of thing that doesn't always work out well, so we need to make sure that we minimize the amount of negativity that's in it, and make sure our results are definitely able to be achieved again.
I, I did perceive that the outside consultant would help us with whatever we're doing. And then the thing that I've been thinking through is, we, we do have both a desire for quantitative data, and then we did, we've also said we want the qualitative piece, and I don't know if one consultant can help with both or not. But yes, I perceive the outside consultant as helping us with the process.
Okay, but that also, Chris, thank you for that, I mean, that's, that's also a great question for, and somebody that we would bring in is, is asking that exact question, just the way you framed it, like, how does this work in terms of addressing these things from a qualitative and quantitative standpoint?
Yeah, could we have examples of both? But I don't think we have an example of one community that actually did both together. So I don't know if, if groups tend to specialize in one or the other.
Right, I know that Decatur City did, they did both. But I don't know to what extent they did the quantitative piece, because I know they started from quantitative data that already existed, the census data, and then moved into a pretty significant qualitative data gathering phase. But the question I don't know the answer to is then what additional quantitative data did they harvest, so. So it's sounding to me like we're, we're feeling like net, very next step is this outside consult, right, right? And I think, I think if that's achievable, that's probably smart, because certainly what we don't want to do is start a process, bring somebody in midway, and then have to pivot it all, or go back to, you know, scratch. Tanisha, any thoughts there? Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the other piece too, in, in terms of an outside consultant, with surveying being a piece of what they do, we also have to look back at, at other things that we said we were interested in looking at and having an outside person look at current systems that are in place in Simsbury right now. And so I, I see this person, or this group, or this whoever is doing it, whoever the consultant is, also taking on a piece of this, on a piece of that as well.
Can you say a little bit more about that? I mean, are you talking about, we had early conversations about?
Like, specific to like the, to the resolution, right? So there are things in the resolution that a survey may not encompass, it may, it might, might get a little bit of it, in terms of how, how individuals in the town are feeling, but it's not going to get to what makes the town work in terms of systems and departments, and things that are going on in the town specifically that, that we need to look at.
Yeah, and I think, I think what I'm hopeful for in, in bringing somebody in who's done this before somewhere else, is that they will also know more specifically those rocks to look under, because they, again, because they've done it before, right? Okay. So in that vein, I mean, if we're talking about that being the very next step, and kind of the basket in which we want to put a lot of our eggs, at least for the very foreseeable future, I, I wrote down some very specific next steps, and obviously would love your ideas too, but you know, Wendy Helm Camp was on this committee for a while, and has agreed to continue to help us in our work, I think it would be, I think reaching out to her and asking her specifically for recommendations and referrals would be a task for someone in this group to take on, and then following up with those folks. The second piece is following up with the consultant that worked with the city of Decatur, whose contact information I have, that was the next step that I thought someone from this group could take on, and then I know, I remember, I just don't remember in which context. I want to say it was Nicole, somebody was going to reach back out to the Department of Justice and find out if they had someone specifically that they could recommend. So right off the top, those are three things that we need to agree, if, if, if you're willing to take on as next steps for this process, and then whatever else you guys want to add or have thought of yourselves.
I, I recall that, about them reaching out to DOJ, and they did, and if I remember correctly, because I have so much stuff going on, that they were not able to give us one specifically to a department or consultant to specifically for us to work with, that we would have to do the research on our own.
Well, that answers that question, thank you.
But back to your, back to your thought about specifics, so like if Wendy has like a list of different consultants that we can reach out to, maybe we all take one or two, and divide it, and divide it amongst ourselves, and, and be able to present to it for, for the meeting.
Yeah, and in fact, in that vein, I will reach out to Wendy and see, you know, how extensive that list might be, and which case I'll just, that, we can, then I'll work to parse it out with, with members of this group. Is anybody, would it, would someone be willing to follow up, and I can send you the contact information, the consultant that worked with the city of Decatur?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll send that information to you, Mary Margaret. I know one of the.
Do we have any kind of ballpark figure on what we're talking about from a budgetary standpoint? Do you have any concept? I mean, I think we kind of need a frame to, as we're starting to approach this.
Go ahead, Tanisha.
I don't, we don't have a specific ballpark number that, in which we can work with. What we are doing right now is just information gathering, so we need, when we're talking to these consultants, we need to make sure that they have expertise in working in small towns, and also what, what that, what that cost would look like to us, and then we could better, better present it to to, to the commit, to the committee, and then also to to, to Kristin to see if we're able to do it.
Right. Yeah.
Mary Margaret, I don't know if this would, this helps or not, but I was thinking part of what helps define it is, you know, the first end product we want is kind of that identification and demonstration of the data on the quantitative side, and then also, you know, the first survey and results, as opposed to, you know, we're looking to work with you for the next five years type of, of deal, so I don't know if, if segmenting what exactly we're looking for helps them, you know, contain a cost.
Right, right, yeah. No, I just thought, you know, if we had a concept of what, what the parameter was to, to see if someone is interested even talking with us, that's where I was going with it, and if we're asking them to design, we're asking them, you know, not only the quantitative, but to design a survey that would be a person-to-person kind of thing, or, or, you know, organization, or as you were talking about, various town departments, the parameters within which, which they, which we see issues perhaps in the area of housing, or, you know, that kind of thing.
Yep.
So we're talking about asking a consultant to, just as ways to frame a conversation, to identify the layers that we would be needing to unpack, investigate, explore further, to develop a survey and work towards producing some quantitative data. And we're talking, and I'm just saying this in response to what Chris just mentioned in terms of the five-year thing, you know, we're looking at, you know, a one-to-two-year initial start, as opposed to a, a three-to-five-year initial start. You know, I, I will say, this is a little bit like, you know, remodeling your bathroom, right? Like, somebody's going to come in and say, sure, it's going to take us, you know, three months. A year later, you know, you've replaced all of your piping, and, but yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely the kind of process that you can start with an estimate, but it's not going to be a nice tidy.
Right.
Right. So.
I do think, just, just, sir, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, the type of surveys that we did, for example, the plan of development, we did look at patterns of transportation in town, people's vision for the future, and it generally was, there's a, there's an end product that's produced, the town learns its lesson, and then moves on, and basically the RFPs have always kind of pertained to that, that document, learning the lesson, and then moving on, as opposed to a multi-year relationship. So I'm just sharing that with you, I think there would be, the ambiguity of a, of an RFP that's a multi-year relationship may, may generate more questions from the Board of Selectmen as opposed to something that's concrete. And I'm not advocating against that, I'm just kind of sharing the language around that.
That's a good point, Chris, and I think, I mean, I do think at some point we're going to have to, well, I shouldn't say that, because I've never been through this process before. I would imagine we will have to make a decision about, okay, do we really want somebody just to come in and help us design, distribute, and analyze a survey, and then be finished? Or do we want someone to come help facilitate a, a process? And some of that, back to Mary Margaret's point, will depend on budget, will depend on timeline, will depend on a whole host of things. But I think we'll get more guidance about that from the experts, right? Like, that'll be the two-way conversation piece of this next step. Well, we'll.
I kind of see the, that survey as being our initial step, our guidance for what we're going to do, not as the end product, but as, as the baseline.
I would agree, and obviously, all this data is to benchmark, right? So we want to look at it from year to year to see if we're making gains, so. One thing, just based on, Tanisha had mentioned being true to the proclamation, and, and when I was doing the notes before from our strategic planning, I did go back, and, and the quantitative data that is listed in the proclamation is housing, health, food security, and criminal justice. So just as we true up what we're looking for from a quantitative point of view. So just, as we true up what we're looking for from a quantitative point of view, being true to the proclamation, it would include those areas.
Yeah, that's that number five resolved.
Right.
Okay. That's helpful, Chris, thank you.
The on-, the only thing with the proclamation that I think does require a little bit of conversation, is, is the proclamation does make reference to education as well. And we, as a Spirit Committee, have been focused on the non-education world, because the, the school does have a separate committee working on that. I did want to flag that for people, that the proclamation does make specific reference to education as well.
And that's the good thing about Sue being on our, um, being on the Spirit, um, Council as well, because she would be able to take some of this stuff back to the Equity Council, um, in terms of what it is that we're, that we're looking, so I could, I see it as, um, as twofold, um, we, we got our bang for our buck with Sue being on.
Yeah.
On Spirit, as well as Equity Council, and I think also, um, in COCE is as well, so, so I, so the work that we do can kind of bleed into, um, the Equity Council, even though it isn't explicitly stated in what we're doing in our work as Spirit.
Do you think it's worth tagging the two of them specifically and just like, reiterating that we're depending on them for that kind of crossover? Okay. Um, and I think I'd probably, um, run that by, well, I mean, honestly, Tanisha, with you here in our subcommittee, I mean, I, I don't want to overstep the Steering Committee Chair folks in doing that, um, but I also don't want to add more to y'alls plate, so, um, I'll, I'll send the three of you an email just to clarify before I move forward there, okay? Um. Okay, so, I mean, I think, I think taking these next steps is going to open up for us a lot of information, and, and hopefully give us some, um, concrete answers, but I think it's going to create some questions too, so I think we need to, um, you know, look to, uh, I know this week is kind of gone, um, today, Wednesday is the new Friday. Um, but I, I think maybe by the end of next week, um, you know, with the Spirit Council meeting being on the seventh, yeah, so even midweek next week, if we can make some of these, um, contacts, that would be great. Um, and I'll certainly check in with you like on Tuesday and find out where everybody is if we haven't heard anything, um, by that point. Does that sound like a good aim?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, great. Um. Alright, in terms of new business, the second item there that we've just been discussing, is there any more that you want to add or ask, or am I missing?
Good beginning.
Awesome, okay. Um, the only other next piece we had talked about, but hadn't really put, we, we didn't give it any glue to make it stick, was, um, you know, part of the qualitative, uh, information gathering, we all agreed, um, could and will certainly come from the, um, the events that the Events Subcommittee is putting together. So those gatherings that are happening where information, there is some content, but there's also some discussion. Um, so, um, I reached out to NCOCE, um, their, their events, they're typically, as y'all know, are aiming to hold an event on the first Thursday of every month. And so what I'd like to do is literally put a name next to, you know, every first Thursday of the month, someone from this committee that, um, can make an attempt at least at being at that particular event, not just to support the event and all of that, but definitely to then report back to this group about any, you know, helpful qualitative observations that folks are, are, are making from being part of these events. Um, so, we can, we can do that now, going through calendars. I can also, we can do that via email and a, and a, you know, sort of fill your name in next to a date. Um, I do think it would be helpful to, if at all possible, to, um, have someone agree to be at the, the gathering on December 3rd, which will, um, center around World AIDS Day. Um. And I don't think we have a time for that yet.
Most likely it's at 6:00 or 6:30.
Okay.
Actually, it is at 6:30, be- because I believe I was in on the email stream, so.
Okay. Um. My Thursdays for the next probably month or two are a little tricky, so I wouldn't be able to make the December or the January. Um, I could probably pick up some of that weight in February, but is anybody able to be at the December 3rd event?
Sure. That should be okay.
I'll do the January event. What's that date Rebecca?
That is January 7th.
Okay.
Um, and he had a, I think he had a topic for that, or maybe not yet, but I do know that the December 3rd, when they're angling to do something, um, around World AIDS Day. Okay, and then, um, in follow-up emails, I'll include the remainder of the calendar for 2021, and we'll just slot in, um, for those events, perfect. Alright, does anybody have any new business that you, I really can't technically add to the agenda, because we've already made it, but, um, anything that we've missed? Alright, is there old business that we need to discuss? I don't have anything on my, um, list. Alright, dear friends. Um, our next meeting will be, um, on, uh, Monday, December 28th at 6:00 PM, um, which follows the monthly Steering Committee meeting, which will be on Monday, December 7th at 6:00 PM. Are there any other questions or concerns or announcements for the good of this group?
Well, one second, so, just confuse me a second, I want to make sure that we get the correct information out. Our next meeting is December 28th, right? Our next meeting, the Data Subcommittee. And the Steering Committee's meeting is December 7th. And then we'll have, then we'll meet the following at the end of, yeah, okay.
Right?
Yep, I got it now. I just wanted to make sure, it, it just sounded a little off to me.
I said it, I said it in reverse chronological order. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um, alright, well, if there's no other business, um, then I make a motion to adjourn our, um, our Subcommittee, Data Subcommittee meeting for, uh, this evening, this afternoon, at 4:45. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanksgiving, a safe Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thanks, everybody, all too. Thanks for being here, I appreciate-
Thanks for organizing it Rebecca.
Patience in your commitment, you're awesome. Be well, everybody.
Take care.